Good evening. I want to thank you folks for coming out when everyone's busy in the lifestyles these days. We're here tonight for our candidates' form for the Abington Selectmen, Selectwomen. The form's pretty basic. We have a two or three minute introduction. Each candidate gets to introduce themselves and what they're about. Then after that, we ask questions. We vote, we vote the questions. Nobody's always first, nobody's always last. The candidates are seated by their parents on the ballot. And the way it usually works is the incumbent would be first on the ballot, and then alphabetically the candidates who were running above that post. And so in this case, we have Selectman Coyle, we have Candidate Jansen, and Candidate Cantor. It's Penny Coyle, Maureen Jansen, and Rebecca Dantos. I'm sure most of you in town know these individuals. Before we really get underway, I'd like to stand and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And while we're doing this, in the spirit of democracy, hidden gems, and golden slums, please think of the soldiers who are laid out of country in the warfaris, become a knight at all times possible. Okay. I just want to stop by thanking first, especially Maureen and Rebecca. This is a rescheduled event, because Mr. Coyle has to work and put food on his table. They were willing to change the schedule so all three candidates could be here. We didn't want to do it, nobody wanted to do it with that candidate missing. So I want to thank you both in particular for accommodating. Because it's important that, it's not about the committee holder, it's about the viewers and voters getting to see who the candidates are and what they're about. So I want to thank you folks for doing that in particular, and I'm sure Mr. Coyle appreciates it.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay. Let's, we can start now with Candidate Coyle, excuse me, Selectman Coyle. And just to give a two or three minute schedule of what you're about and what's going on.
Sure, thank you, Bob. You mentioned about bringing, putting food on my table, but you know, in my job, I put food at everybody in town's table, pretty much. So, and it's a busy week at Trukey's this week, as you can guess. So, I would like to thank Mr. Toomey for organizing this forum. This evening in the Republican Town Committee's event last week, a great ways for the public to determine the differences between the candidates and to see how we stand on the issues that affect Abington. Thank you also to Rebecca and Maureen for working around my work schedule, allowing me to attend tonight. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Ken Coyle. I live on Washington Street with my wife Cindy. We have three children, all who graduated from the Abington Public School System. If I look familiar, it's because you may have seen me at Trukey's supermarket. I've worked there for more than 30 years, but this is my first Easter holiday week as a store manager, so you can probably guess we're in store for a couple of crazy days ahead of it. People ask me, have you lived in Abington your whole life? My reply is always the same, not yet. Abington is that sort of town. I am proud to say that I've lived at Abington for most of my life. I played Little League here. I graduated from Abington High School. I was married here. I bought my first home here. Coincidentally, I then paid my first tax bill here. I raised a family here. I attend church here, and I work here. It is not by accident that I am still here, it is by choice. And I am not the only person that feels this way. Abington is a great place to live then and now. I am running for reelection to the Board of Selectmen to make sure that it remains the same type of town that makes people proud to be from. A place where parents want to raise their children, a community that people want to settle down in, a place where young adults want to move back to. The sort of place where people are not embarrassed to have a bumper sticker on the car that says "Towny." I've heard my colleagues speak about coming home to Abington or making the decision to live in Abington. Although it may sound as if I never ever leave this town, it's when I do that I gain a deeper appreciation for some of the things that you and I may take for granted or not even notice. You never realize what a difference our new trash collection system makes in the appearance of the town until you're driving through surrounding towns on trash day. Trash bags are piled high on the ground or in barrels without lids. Garbage is blowing all over everyone's yards and streets, and empty barrels roll around in the street until they finally become speed bumps. It was not that long ago that our cribs and sidewalks looked just like our neighboring towns. Thanks to our new innovative trash collection system, it not only saves the town money, it also improves the appearance of our neighborhoods and keeps our streets and yards cleaner. I never thought of Abington as being on the cutting edge of anything. And maybe I noticed it more since I was on the Board of Health, but if you keep an eye open as you travel around, I think you will agree with me. Recently, in the process of selling my mother's home in Hanson, it was determined that it did not pass Title V, and we were required to install a new, very costly septic system. While serving as an Abington Sewer Commissioner, I am proud to say that I was on board to see the completion of Phase III of the municipal sewer system. Because residents chose to invest in the infrastructure many years ago, Abington is now almost entirely on the municipal sewer system. Homeowners here no longer fear Title V inspections and the tens of thousands of dollars and additional expenses it often requires. Those are the few of the changes in Abington that I had a small part in, and improvements that I really didn't realize the significance of until I drove beyond the town lines. You don't have to leave town to see what I consider as the accomplishment that I am most proud of since becoming a Selectman. These last three years, we have managed to balance our budgets and still been able to slowly increase the staffing levels of town departments. Combining cost savings measures, restructuring, along with the cooperation of department heads, we have been able to do things such as opening the second fire station, and have still been able to put money away in the town stabilization fund. None of this could have been accomplished without the teamwork of residents, town boards, and town employees. All this hard work improving the town's financial position has not gone unrecognized. Last month, the Selectmen were notified that Standard and Poor's, the nation's leading financial rating company, had increased Abington's bond rating. This rating improvement will save the town substantial money anytime we have to borrow for short or long-term debt. This speaks volumes to the progress we have made from a few short years ago, when there were only, there was only $1,000 in the stabilization fund, till now, when we have over $1 million. We must continue to maintain this course and continue the progress we have made. In closing, I would like to say that on Saturday, April 26th, you have a choice. I encourage you to vote for someone who has a proven track record and has worked hard to make our town government accountable and transparent. Someone who will continue the progress we have made. Someone who is accessible and has a long history of community involvement. Someone who is not afraid to make the tough decisions on the big issues that affect our town. Someone who shares your priorities and your passion for Abington. I am that person, and I truly hope that you will consider using one of your two votes to reelect me to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. And I also would like to, in addition to thanking Bob, thank the other candidates and Selectman Coyle for coming this evening, and to those of you who have decided to take your precious time and meet with us here in the Town Hall. Again, thanks for the opportunity to speak directly to the voters and the residents of Abington. I'm hoping that this is an opportunity for you to get to know me a little better, and with the questions that we'll have later on, so that you can get to know some of our opinions and our positions on the issues. I'm Maureen Jansen. You may or may not recognize me from either late nights if you're watching the Government Channel at the Finance Committee, or having gone to town meeting. I have been on the Finance Committee for six years. I have been the chairperson of the Finance Committee for the last three. In that role, it's afforded me a very deep understanding of where our town money comes from, where we expend it, what the department's needs are, what the towns, what the town residents feel is important, and what they feel should be maybe pushed down the road a little bit. So, looking at all that, also it's afforded me the understanding of our position with regard to new growth in the town, and how we need new growth, and what are the roadblocks to new growth, and how important it would be to have new growth in the town. I've had the good fortune, like I said, to work with fellow volunteers on the Finance Committee for those six years. Again, we are volunteers, and we bring our talents and our perspective to the Finance Committee. All the times that we meet with all the department heads, and you know, during the very busy times which we are in right now, which is creating and crafting the budget, they always represent the residents' views and ask questions that you would ask if you were on the Finance Committee. I've truly enjoyed my time on the Finance Committee, but I look to this position as a way of broadening my reach, and again, bringing my skills at being able to negotiate with different groups to come to a common understanding and, for instance, just the finances that we can all live with in this town. I've worked with three town managers, I've worked with two interim town managers, I've worked with every department head, the school committee, the school department, library, trustees, senior center, our old and our new highway, and the police chief. We've worked with all of those departments when creating these seven fiscal town budgets that we've had. And I would like to note that we've been able to come to balanced budgets without using Proposition Two and a Half overrides all the years that I have been in my tenure on the Finance Committee. That's no easy feat, given how you're trying to balance the needs of one department against others, and also, you know, managing the town revenues so that we can spend what we have, and keeping our spending in check. Like I said before, every issue and every vote, every consideration that we've done has always been made consistently with looking at what's right for this town and what the town has indicated is important to them. And I want you to know that when petitioners come in and meet with the Finance Committee, I am the person, I listen to what their needs are, I listen to town meeting and what their views are in their votes, and use that in every decision that I've made going forward. Moving on, just some of the things that we've dealt with in the Finance Committee under my tenure is some of the things that Mr. Coyle has mentioned, the stabilization fund. When I came into the Finance Committee, we were at $1,000 in our stabilization fund. And for those of you who are interested in what stabilization is, it's basically your savings account for the town. It was about $1,000 at that time. We had been using stabilization, which is usually like, really like, one-time funds. We had been using that periodically to help balance the budget and not replacing it. At this time, we are currently at about $1 million in stabilization, which again, is no easy feat. It's keeping close controls over our expenditures. Again, we've also discussed keeping schools open, closing schools, opening the full-time kindergarten and the preschools that we're running now. We, during my tenure, we temporarily closed Station Two, the fire station number two, and then reopened it and got them back up to full staff. Trash, which apparently is something we're going to talk about tonight, again, it's like, the decisions about how much we want to pay for trash, how we're going to dispose of our trash. We went through, you know, do we want to do pay-as-you-go? And now, like, again, as Mr. Coyle said, we have this very innovative trash collection system and how much we pay for it. By the way, it saves us about $200,000 a year from where we were at the, when I came into the Finance Committee. Again, opening and sustaining the senior center, looking at the hours and the staffing of the library. We've managed the police budget and staffing, as well as, like I said, other issues which we're dealing with too, about cars and equipment, and you know, innovative equipment that the police need in order to keep us all safe. We've talked about highway budgets and the potential DPW that's potentially coming this way, and the legislation that's necessary to drive that forward. Veteran services has become a big thing right now too, because you know, we've got so many more veterans coming back, and when you think of veterans, you're thinking, you might be thinking about, you know, older folks, but you're also talking now about the young kids that are coming back and what their needs are too. Anyway, like I said, I can go on and on. But as I said, I've presided over seven town meetings, always trying to present the financial picture so people can understand where the money's coming from, what is being expended on. I've worked very closely with the Board of Selectmen, and hopefully, if I am fortunate enough to get your vote, can be on the Board of Selectmen, I would continue to listen to the residents and what's important to them, and make sure that they, that I can help them be knowledgeable about these big issues and hot issues in town. Knowledge is powerful. It helps guide good decisions. Knowledge comes with experience, and using an open mind and balancing that experience and the knowledge that you have. I've been available to residents of the town on the phone, via email, in meetings. As I mentioned before, sometimes people that I know either don't want to go food shopping with me, or don't want to go out with me at night because they know I'm going to be stuck talking about town issues everywhere I go, which I love, believe me. I think, I love going to football games and baseball games and watching the Green Wave, and then also hearing what the residents and the fans are interested in. Real quick, with beyond volunteering for the town, I've been a resident for 15 years. I've raised my children here. We moved into town when my kids were about three or four years old. They've gone to public schools the whole time. I've got one graduating from Abington High this year, and going on to school at Plymouth State up in New Hampshire. The other one is a junior, and you know, God willing, he'll also be graduating next year and going on to school too. Like many of you, like I said, I get my kids up, and I pay my bills. I pulled my trash in from the sidewalk today, and apparently, we're going to talk about trash. Aside from that, I work for New York Life. I have worked for Retirement Plan Services, so I'm very familiar with the needs of our residents, and everyone for saving for retirement. I'm familiar with pensions and pension funding, and what happens when your pensions are unfunded, and you know, we obviously have employees that rely upon their pensions here. I'm a Green Wave booster. I've been involved in youth baseball, youth football. Spent my fall weighing the Mohawks Inn for many years before they played football, and got to know a lot of the kids in town who are now graduated and grown up and off to college, et cetera. I grew up in Quincy, bought my first house in a different town, but have settled into this town, and like I said, spent about 15 years. I love where I live, I love the town. I think back, so it's been about 15 years I've been in town. I've been involved in, one way or another, in either town politics or town volunteering almost since the minute I signed on the dotted line and bought my house. And I wouldn't continue to choose to live here if I didn't feel tremendous Abington pride and a commitment to the town. So to wrap it up, I'm not afraid to make decisions, to make hard decisions. I will listen to you, and I would happily accept your vote, at least one of your two votes, on April 26th if you will vote for me for Selectmen. It's Maureen Jansen, thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. So I just want to say that I'm not going to recycle a speech that I delivered last Tuesday. I want to tell you a story about an experience that has really impacted my decision to run. A year ago today, I had spent several months campaigning for various candidates who shared my values, and I was looking for my next opportunity. Around this time last year, I saw Representative Marty Walsh at a forum at my alma mater, UMass Boston. As I listened to him talk about his role as a legislator, I could tell Marty was an honest and caring leader who wanted the best for his constituents. I admired his character, and I was inspired by his commitment to public service. Not long after that, I was hired to work on his campaign full-time as a field organizer. As a field organizer, I played a part in the largest grassroots campaign operation the city of Boston has ever seen. I'm proud to say that I worked in the trenches of that campaign. I worked with community activists, and I trained volunteers to persuade voters to vote for Marty. I organized and planned phone banks, canvases, and I learned how impactful grassroots campaigning really is. I understand the value of meeting voters face-to-face and talking with them on a personal level about the issues that matter to them. My campaign experiences taught me the importance of electing leaders who will listen and be accountable. I will be that accountable leader who will listen and learn. I am running because I want to be an advocate for the townspeople of Abington, seniors, students, parents, everyone. I believe we all have a stake in the communities that we live in and work in, and we all have a responsibility to help one another succeed. You can count on me to ask the questions that need to be asked, and I will always listen to your ideas and concerns about the town of Abington.
Thank you, Rebecca. Before we start with the questions, I just want to introduce a couple of elected officials out here. Let's see, Selectman Mike Framey, thoughts in the burbine. Candidate Sue Emery for the Board of Health, who's going to be on the ballot. Mark Lindy, running for Register of Providence. I just wanted to say hello, and welcome to this tremendous.
Real quick, hi folks, thanks for, I don't want to interrupt you, but my name is Mark Lindy, I'm from Brockton, I'm on the Southeastern Associational School Committee. I'm a library trustee in Brockton. I've done public service all my life, and while the county's retiring, so I'm a senior in his position. I hope to talk to you in the future and bring that story to Brockton, so I'm not too hard to find. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. So, now we'll start with our questions. By the way, some people may have arrived late. I have this form here if you want to write any questions down. Don't take questions before, Mr. Groan, I don't want to embarrass you, questions or situations. If you feel during the speeches, you're welcome to come up and write a question down, I'll be glad to ask it if it's not inappropriate. Okay. A big issue in town, of course, is the new school building. And what's going to happen with that? So we'll start, we do, first, we start with Mr. Coyle, work our way down. The second question will start with Maureen, the third question will start with Rebecca. So, talk to us, how do you feel about the new school building and the cost, et cetera?
How do I feel? The town, sure. The town is in dire need for a new school. I mean, we have the older schools in the area, there's no doubt about that. And as I spoke last week, I think it's important that we work to make sure that the cost is mitigated the best it can be. So in other words, we talked about getting a better bond rating, so that's going to give us, save us money on our interest rate. We met with the landfill experts who are telling us that maybe the landfill's not going to cost as much as we originally thought. So that's another good sign. We need to work to increase the percentage that the state is going to pay, they're going to pay a minimum of 55% of the cost. So we, I think, through the planning of the school building committee, we can maybe increase their percentage a little bit more by making it a greener building. So those are keys. The thing that I fear the most is that I don't want to be working at the store and have this elderly couple come up to me that's on a fixed income and say, why did you vote for the schools? I want to give them an answer, and I want to tell them, because now was the time to do it. We could never do any better than what we were going to do. We did everything we possibly could, and I realize you don't have kids in the school system, but it's going to, in the long run, it's going to help the town, it's going to increase the value of the property. And you know, hopefully, you'll live long enough to reap the benefit of it. But it's important that we do it now, because we never know when the other opportunity's going to be, you know, a better opportunity will arise. So I basically think that we should do it now, we put all our ducks in a row, and just, you know, bite the bullet, so to speak, and it's going to cost a lot of money. I mean, depending upon the value of your home, but it's going to cost a lot of money. Even if you just have an average house in Abington, it's going to cost $500 or $600. And honestly, that's a lot of money in this economy. But if we don't do it now, if we don't do it now, there's not going to be a better time to do it. One thing I do want to point out though is, I don't want to do it because the other towns are doing it. All the other towns in the area, you keep up with the Joneses, I think it's important that we do what's right for Abington, and I think doing it now is a good thing.
Thank you. Maureen.
Thanks. I also am in support of the town voting in favor of the new schools. If you go out to the website and you look at the design of the school, I think you'll see that it is functional, and it is probably one of the best alternatives. I know people will say, well, why don't we just fix the ones that we have? Do we really need it? And honestly, I would encourage anyone to go out to the website and take a look at it. I'd also encourage you, if you have the opportunity, to try to get a tour of the existing facilities that we have. I know my kids have gone through all the schools, I know I've been through the tour of all the schools. And as much as we have done incredible work trying to keep those schools functional and in the best shape that we can, and believe me, they've been creative and innovative in doing such. I also agree that it is time now to, as Mr. Coyle said, bite the bullet. And the reason that I say that is a number of things. One, I think financially, we're in very good shape from a town perspective. I realize still that the economy is kind of questionable for people, and the economy is coming back, if you will, but that doesn't mean you're seeing it in your paycheck. I do understand that. But when you have the opportunity to replace the schools, and which I feel is needed, where you've got the Massachusetts School Building Authority willing and able, and we've made it to the top of the list, to get more than 50% of the cost associated with the school to be paid for by the state, if we don't do it now, you have to understand that we come off that list. And who knows what would happen? If we need a new school five years down the road, or 10 years down the road, there is no guarantee that this option will be available. So, think of it this way, I drive a car that's not new, but if I need a new car, and someone's willing to pay for half of it, it's a hard decision to not go for that option. In addition, I work for New York Life, I hire kids right out of college, and I know what they can do and what they've been exposed to. And I would hate to see us not providing the opportunity for our students, our students to be competitive in the economy and in their jobs as they move forward. Last thing I would say about that, so I do support it, I understand that, you know, that the financial burden, it won't be on your levy, but it will be a capital exclusion or a debt exclusion. We're in, town-wise, we're in good shape to get good rates, you know, when you go to the bank and try, in your borrowing. You want to be able to be in the best credit shape you can be so that your debt is going to be cheaper. But the last thing I would say too, is that I perceive, and I believe the School Building Authority, the Abington School Building Committee agrees with us too, is the facility should be for more than just the students. Right now, we don't have really a functional auditorium. So if you wanted to have something that required an auditorium, we don't have the facilities for that. I don't see why we couldn't have park and rec type of things. In town, if you're familiar, we have some volleyball and some intramural basketball for adults. But why not use these facilities and bring the community into it, instead of, you know, just the students using it? Everyone's paying for this. Let's find ways, maybe, you know, continuing education, where people can go in and use the computers and use the facilities that you're paying for, though, I'll get off that, right? So anyway, to make a long story short, I do definitely support it, and those are my reasons why.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
Rebecca.
Thank you, Bob. I think a new school would be perfect for the town. I think now is absolutely the right time. We can't wait. Interest rates are going to go up, the costs of construction are going to go up. This project will bring great jobs to the town. In addition, a lot of people have been asking me, you know, I think that the current facilities that we have are perfectly adequate, and I don't know why we need a new school. I think that our current facilities are just fine. And you know, I would tell them that the high school and the Beaverbrook Elementary, even though they are the newest buildings, they are not up to the current fire safety standards. So, a new school would bring not only good jobs, but it would also keep our buildings updated, up to code, and safe for our students. And finally, I do think that the teachers and the students would benefit from a newer, modern, more technologically advanced environment. I think that that would be very good for long-term learning, and I think that it would really enhance our school's restrict. And I think I support the plan wholeheartedly, and it's certainly one of the reasons why I'm running, because I care about the future of the town, and I care about our children and their ability to be educated properly.
Thank you. This question isn't on your list I gave you, but it's not a...
It's not a big deal.
Uh-oh. Maureen, you mentioned in your statements about the veterans' services, and how veterans are coming home. We gross recently don't have a veterans' agent, I guess we're working with conjunction with Whitman. So that having been said, how do you feel about that situation? Should Abington have its own veterans' agent, and if so, we know why, if not?
It's a very timely issue, as you mentioned, Bob, because up until now, we have had an Abington-specific veterans' agent. Joe Colantonio, if any of you remember, you know, was fabulous in the past years that he did it. Now, you know, we were in an interim situation, and now a combined, or a divisional, if you will, veterans' agent is what we're going with now. Personally, I am willing to look at that and to go with that, because we are, because there could be definitely some economies of scale, if you will, if we could share the burden and do more, if we have a combined veterans' agent and the administration that works for them. If we can save a little bit of money doing that from an administrative perspective, but it doesn't, it's not going to stop the ability for us to give, to pay veterans' benefits. And in fact, if you're using somebody and you can combine resources and combine knowledge with someone, like we're doing with Whitman, we may actually find that we can provide better services, because you know, two heads are better than one, if you will, and as much as there is one veterans' agent, combined veterans' agent, they do have additional resources from an administrative perspective. So if we can save a little money on the administrative piece by combining that, and then still offer and provide the benefits, I am absolutely in favor of it. And I will mention another thing, is that if it doesn't work for some reason, if the town feels that this is, we can come out of that agreement as well and go back to having one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Rebecca.
I definitely, I definitely think that's something that we should look into. You know, I really support all of the men and women who have served our country, and I think that it's our duty to take care of them and make sure that we can help them find good jobs, help them find housing. And like Maureen said, I think that if we can collaborate with another town on resources and staffing, I think that that would be excellent, and I think that the people who have served our country, who live in Abington, now would be served by a veterans' agency.
Okay. Mr. Coyle.
Currently, Abington does not have a veterans' agent. What they're doing now is there's two women in the Town Hall that have been trained to do the paperwork and to instruct the people who call, and when you call the veterans'
And when you call the veterans office, you get somebody, you get, you know, you get response. You leave a message and you call right away. So I don't want people, I don't want veterans to fear that they're not being taken care of, you know, and I'm scared that they are fearing that, but please, you are being taken care of. There's two women in the town hall that can do the paperwork. And the Rockland, currently, the Rockland veterans agent has been helping us out, and he's on call, and I actually met with him last week up here at the, in the veterans office to provide aid to an Abington resident. But what the plan is, is that on July 1st, the town manager is going to, the town manager, along with the committee of the Whitman town manager, are going to hire a veterans agent. They're going to form a committee to do it with veterans involved. And the women, Tom Andrew is a veteran also, so that's a good thing. And what's going to happen is the towns of Abington and Whitman are going to share a full-time veterans agent. And when he gets on board, he's going to hire an assistant veterans agent that can do everything he does and a part-time administrative staff. So I believe the people of Abington and Whitman are going to get the best of both worlds. You're going to have three people that can do the job. And what that does is that's going to help an Abington resident. Suppose, just for an example, and maybe this isn't going to happen, but if you've got someone that lives on that, the Whitman side of Abington, and they want to go to Whitman Town Hall to get their services, they can do that, you know, and vice versa. And suppose, sometimes it's personality conflicts. I've heard things about former veterans agents that maybe clashed with some people. Well, you've, you've got another option. You don't have to go to that veteran agent. You can go to the other one. So, and this whole thing, we talked about it, we, we did it in public meetings of the Board of Selectmen. This wasn't about saving money. If it saves money, great. But it's about trying to provide a better product for the veterans of Abington. And, and exactly what Maureen said, if it does not work, we can go back to the way it was and have one, one person in our town hall doing the job.
Okay. Thank you. Again, this made me think, Maureen, when you brought it up, there's talk about making a new Public Works Agency. So let's start with you, Rebecca. Do you think that that's the time to do this, or it should be not to be done? What's your opinion?
Yeah, you know, what I understand is that we have a separate water sewer department and a separate parks and recreation department. Now, a department of public works would combine the water, the sewer, and the parks department to create a department of public works. Then there would be a separate recreation department with a staffer. So from my understanding, this is an excellent combination of resources. It would save money on staffing, and in addition, we wouldn't suffer a lack of services because it would just basically be a reorganization of departments. And, I mean, I personally think it's a good thing. A lot of other towns have been doing the same thing, and I think that it would be really, really cost-effective and appropriate for the town.
Okay. Kenny Coyle?
Basically, the town of Abington's had a public works department, in reality, for quite a while now. A few years ago, I think that the voters at town meeting basically eliminated the park and rec department. They're still staffing there. But, so the park and rec guys work under the highway department now anyways. I say guys, I'm assuming it's all guys, but that's kind of sexist of me. But the park and rec, park and rec employees work under the highway department right now. And we can't combine the water because the Abington, Rockland have a joint water work. So we can't combine the water department. But there's talk about combining the sewer department employees with, with those other employees, and I think it's a great idea. And now that the town is, has an interim highway superintendent, might be a good time to do it also, because, you know, you're not going to be really, you know, there'll be the, the order of, all right, who's in charge? The highway guy or the sewer guy? And those titles will be gone anyways. And another thing to note, too, is that the sewer, the guys that work for the sewer department now, they're plowing in the winter anyways. They receive a plowing stipend, and they plow when the town needs it. So in reality, we have, it's not called a DPW, but we have a DPW. And another thing, too, is I would like to see the town, in the future, with this new trash system, it's only two trucks. You know, possibly we can buy the two trucks and have those guys do it. It might require a little more staffing, but I'd like to investigate the possibility to do that. Quite a few towns do trash pickup. And now with this new system, it's not the four or six trucks that used to be, and it's only one person in the truck rather than the three people on each truck. So that, further down the road, when the DPW gets formed, I'd like the town to investigate that, too.
That'll be our next question. Maureen?
Okay. DPW, Department of Public Works. Many towns already have a DPW by virtue of just what they do and, and what you call it and how it works in reality. First of all, the, the first step would be that we do have to change the charter. We have a charter that designates that we have a park and rec, and we have a highway, and we have a water group. But anyway, to make a long story short, as was mentioned here, we have mutual, mutual aid, if you will, already in town, where highway and water and park and rec are already working jointly to, to get a lot of the services that you, that you all enjoy, that we all enjoy. It's not unusual if there is a, if there's a, if there is a, something happens in the street, maybe there's a water main break or something like that. It's, you, you're going to drive by there, and you're going to see the water guys, and you're going to see the sewer guys, and you're going to see the highway guys, and you're going to see the police, you know, blocking off the streets and that type of thing. They all work as mutual aid as it is now, and the, the number of years, a number of years ago, when funding for the park and rec was, was, was cut, and now it has been, some of that has been returned. You know, we've done what we can with the, with the money that we have, and in, in many cases, the services have continued. So why not really make a DPW and formalize that? And have a DPW supervisor who then has, that then has administrators, if you will, or people, or heads of other sub-departments working for them? To make a long story short, I think we have it. In fact, we just don't have it on paper just yet. And so if it can save us a little bit of money, having one administrator and some sub-administrators underneath it, I'm all for that, too. I think it's, it's, it's pretty much on paper, and I think you're still going to see the excellent services that highway and water and park, and the park department do. Rec is, rec is awesome, too, and I think that we can do a number of things with rec, too, where we can expand some of the services that the town uses, too. But anyway, I'm in favor of the DPW, and that's the reason why.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Coyle, you mentioned about the trash program.
Yes.
That'll be our next question. How do you feel about the new trash program the town implemented last year?
I think it's a great thing. As Maureen touched upon, it saves the town a lot of money, $200,000. The first year, we did not save money, but that's because the town bought the barrels. We own the barrels. And those barrels are, I made jokes in the past about the old trash system, and I pushed for this trash system, and my big thing on TV, and the other selectmen were kind of sick of hearing it, was about the squirrels, the squirrels, the squirrels. They just ate through my old barrels, you know, and they were actually trying to eat through these ones, but, you know, they're sturdy. And that, that's a good thing, because the town owns those barrels. And I think that the cost savings and the fact that the town looks so much neater, and it, it sounds ridiculous, but, you know, and I, and I spoke to it in my opening statement, but the trash isn't blowing all over the place. I mean, the lids are uptight. You don't have people, that many people going through your trash like in the, in the other days. You don't see the street lined with, with sofas and odd-shaped boxes and different kinds of bags and the animals getting, getting in the bags. Just that alone, I think, is worth the price of admission or is a benefit. But the cost savings, too, and like I said, I think in the future, the, the town could look into possibly providing that service to the, to the residents of Abington on our, as a, as a town department, so.
Okay. So, I mean, trashing...
Absolutely. I, I'm going to be honest with you. The last time I was on the Board of Health, and we, we kind of worked to get this in place by slowly eliminating the amount of trash, you know? It went from five, it was unlimited at one point, and, you know, we went down to three barrels, and it was a natural progression, because these barrels are big. And there was concern, the barrels are too heavy, you can't wheel them to the street, you know? And I've got to speak highly to our former town manager, John D'Agostino. He was a big advocate for this, because the town of Mansfield did it. And I drove through Mansfield, and I realized, you know, this could be pretty good. I mean, I obviously want the barrels to be Abington's town colors and not Mansfield's town colors, but it is a great thing. It really is. And the other thing, too, that people don't realize is trash is charged by the amount of weight. And those barrels would sop up the water and the rain, and just the tonnage, the figures for tonnage have gone down immensely, and they continue to go down. So it's definitely a great thing for the town.
Thank you. Maureen?
Thank you. Ken stole a lot of my thunder as I was thinking about how to answer that, but the fact of the matter is, I, I am, I'm a huge advocate and in favor of, of the new, the new, we still calling it new, of the, of the trash or the waste disposal that we have. In addition to many of the things that have already been mentioned, I, I would also state that, you know, in, in addition to, to, you know, the, how much, how, how much better it looks and, and how the, the tops are staying and on, on and all that, it also has created that understanding about how important recycling is. When we, when this was introduced, and, and Ken is right, that it was sort of piecemealed in. It was, it sort of like dripped on us a little bit until we all got relatively comfortable with it. But there was, there was a huge fear about, am I going to, like, is trash going to be piled up? Are people going to be taking their trash down to, you know, Chestnut Street and dropping it off? If you recall, there was these, all these fears about how, how in the world are we going to get into one barrel and one recycle? So we had to live with it a little while, and we all had to sort of change our, our ways that we do things. And, and fear always is, is something that keeps you, that, that keeps you paralyzed, if you will. So now we're into this, and I think we all have become so much more aware of when we're throwing something out and whether it can or can't be recycled. I would give the Board of Health awesome kudos to educate, educating our, you know, educating all of us about what can and can't be recycled. In addition to the money that it's saving, and we own the barrels, and I think also, if, if you get to a point, and many people have done this, where they find themselves recycling so much now that they can get a second recycling bin, you know, that's, and put yourself back five years ago, the things that you were throwing away and the things that you're not throwing away now. So it forced us to do it, and I think we're, we're all, you know, really happy with, I can't speak for everyone, I know I am very, very happy, happy about it. I wish my sons would bring the barrels in instead of me bringing them in, but we'll work on that. But a long story short, it's saving us some money, and, and I really do think that there are so many good things about it that I, I'm very pleased that we made the jump and did it.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
Rebecca?
Well, I think the barrels are a great project. You know, I really am in favor of recycling and preserving our resources as much as possible. However, from how I understand, the cost of the barrels was estimated a little bit lower than how the, how they actually appeared on our tax burden. And I just think that that's a concern about transparency and accountability, and I think that I would make sure the voters knew how each capital improvement project impacted their wallets.
Okay. Thank you. On a national level, it seems like partisan politics has taken a step backwards. A lot of things aren't getting done, a lot of log jams in Washington. One of our, actually, I got an email on this, somebody actually took the time to write in a question to us. How do you feel about partisan politics in town-level government? So we start with Maureen.
Okay. Well, first of all, I would say that no doubt, the, the United States, the United States' electoral process has got to be one, if not the, best in, in the world. I mean, all you have to do is watch the voting in, you know, in Afghanistan and, and all around the world, where, where people are walking miles and miles just to cast their vote, and how, you know, the transition of power that happens in the United States is so calm, and it's so, you know, it's, it's, no one's throwing shoes at each other and that type of thing. So to, to wrap that up, I'd say I, I'm in favor of the multi-party system, absolutely. And the fact that Americans can go and affiliate themselves with, with any party that they choose without fear is, is just something that we take for granted in the rest of the world. A lot, a lot of parts of the world do not have that. Having said that, I would say that, you know, partisan politics has a place in, in many parts, but I, I don't know that I agree that it has a place in, in the town-level politics. The things that are important to our town are important to both Democrats, Republicans, independents, like myself. I personally do not affiliate with, with either party, because I feel that that way I can, you know, everybody's going to make their decisions as they do as they go to the polls, but I just feel like I, I listen to, to issues, and I listen to someone who I, like, who I relate to and will vote in my heart and will vote my, my integrity. Again, I, I think party, parties in the United States and in the electoral as a whole are fabulous, and I think we are absolutely, you know, the epitome of the rest of the world. However, I just don't think that party politics is all that imperative at the town level.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
Rebecca?
Well, I think that's a really interesting question that's brought up. You know, this is a nonpartisan election. It's, could be between Democrats, Republicans, and independents, and in fact, there is one of each who's running for, for one of the two seats. I, I aim to keep it as nonpartisan as possible. And I also don't think that the issues that are debated in Washington have any place in our town. And this is not about Democrats versus Republicans. This is about really what's best for the town, and I hope the voters understand that, and I hope the people who are watching the campaigns do understand that this is about what's best for the town. This is not one party versus the other.
Okay. Mr. Coyle?
We all know town elections are nonpartisan, and then you chuckle after you say that. They're supposed to be nonpartisan. And I, I think they truly are nonpartisan, and I'll give you some evidence to that fact. I'm a proud Republican. And if anybody asks me, you know, "Are you Republican or are you Democrat?", I'm a Republican. But if every Republican in Abington voted for me, and that was it, I wouldn't be a selectman now, you know? I probably wouldn't even be the dog catcher. You know, honestly, there aren't that many Republicans in town. I think you, town elections are about doing good for the town, what you've done for the town in the past, and the way, the way you're respected by the town's voters. So I truly think that town elections should not be partisan, and I think they're fairly nonpartisan, as evidenced by me becoming a selectman. I, I'm concerned, though, and I'm going to be blunt about this, a friend of mine called me the other night, and he said that he received a phone call in Abington urging them to vote for a candidate for selectmen. And it was from Norfolk County Union. Now, we're, we're in Plymouth County, so I'm not sure. That sounds to me like it's maybe not partisan, but I don't know. So that, that concerns me a little bit. And I know that I've never taken any money from the Republican Town Committee to run for anything or Republican State Committee, and I've received no help from any, well, personal friends of mine that are Republicans, but no Republican Party, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are the only questions we had prepared.
All right.
I'm sure there are many issues that are still out there, and knowing how visible you, all three of you are, I'm sure if anybody's watching or anybody here asks questions, you can more than welcome to contact these individuals. Before you do your closing statements, Ken, did you have a website or anything, or number you want to get out, or anything to reach you?
I can, no, honestly, come to Trukey's and, and say hi, and buy a ham. Thank you.
Maureen?
I, I think if you Google me, I think my telephone number shows up, my address shows up, especially because of Finance Committee. So I think I'm off the website now, having, having taken myself off of the Finance Committee to run for this position. But, but certainly, I also, also have, I also have a, a personal Facebook page, but I also have a Committee to Elect Maureen Johnson Facebook page. You can, you can message me in there, you can post on that. It's, it's open, it's public.
Did you just go to Facebook and type in Maureen Johnson?
Or Committee to Elect Maureen Johnson, sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a Facebook page as well. It's facebook.com/坎者forAbington and Twitter as well. So I think it's really important for people who are running for elected office to be available on social media. So I've been very active on those, on those platforms, so I encourage people to contact me there.
Thank you. Okay, we'll do closing statements. So then we break away now.
Okay. I'm going to rehash some of my speech, only because my speechwriter's on vacation. Before becoming a selectman three years ago, I served our town in a variety of positions since the early 90s. Sewer commissioner, Finance Committee, then onto the Board of Health. I did this because I considered it an honor to give back to the community that's given so much to me. And I ran for these boards and positions because I thought I could turn, I could turn, I could help the town and turn some of these boards around. Through common sense, hard work, transparency, and a willingness to work with others, we were able to bring respectability and public's trust back to the town boards that, before I ran for some of these boards, had been, there were some issues with them. And I'm proud to say that for the four years I served on the Finance Committee and my three years as a selectman, we never, never ever asked for an override to fund the town's as a selectman, we never, never ever asked for an override to fund the town's operating budget. Now, more than ever, the same financial responsibility is needed. I can talk about, I know what a gallon of milk costs. That's what I said last time, you know, you can get it for like a little, $3.50. But I don't really wanna talk about that. My community involvement and my accessibility give me a distinctive advantage in doing my job as a selectman. As I mentioned before, I work here in town. Besides the short commute and the money I save on gas, there's another benefit from working so close to home. This job allows me to get the pulse of the community and a feel as to how the decisions we make as elected officials affect residents. Over 2,000 customers come through Trukey's every day. The majority of our customers live in Abington. They know that they can find me there. They know that I am approachable, and they can talk to me about whatever issues they may have. That's one of the benefits of being a manager now. Before, when I was working for somebody else, you know, I couldn't really talk that much. But now, I'm like the Walmart greeter there.
With Edmund.
Yeah, exactly, with Bob's son, Edmund. They know they can find me there. They know that I am approachable. It could be something as simple as a streetlight being out or an issue more complicated as to who to contact to help receive benefits for the veterans. We may not always agree, but they know that I am there, and I will do whatever I can do to help. They also know that if I do not know the answer, which it happens, believe it or not, I will follow up and put them in touch with the right person. No matter what the outcome, next Saturday, I am not going anywhere. I will still be here at Trukey's greeting you. I will still be involved in the town. I will still be on the Historical Commission, and I will still be heavily involved in the Lions Club. My wife says often to me, let's move south. And I tell her I'm not gonna be living in Whitman. So I wanna, I plugged it last Candidates Night, Lions Club Breakfast. Please help the Lions Club out. We do a lot of great for the town and a lot for people with eyesight. Lions Club Breakfast is Election Day up at the high school, so you can do, you know, you can vote and get a belly full of pancakes. So in closing, I would like to again thank Mr. Toomey for hosting this forum. I'd like to thank my opponents, not really opponents, colleagues. And as usual, there's some great questions. On Saturday, April 26th, after you had your fill of pancakes, I hope you will consider using one of your two votes to reelect me to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. And again, thank you, Bob, for taking your time out to do this. And again, thanks for everyone who's gonna fall asleep watching this or watch it, you know, intently, either way. But, and I also wanted to thank my peers. But anyway, hopefully this evening has given us all an opportunity to again hear from the candidates about who we are, why we're vying for this position, what our positions are on some of the hot topics, and also the opportunity to hear from you guys and let us know what's important to you. I really, from my own perspective, I really hope that if I am, again, lucky enough to get your vote and be on the, on the selectman, on the Board of Selectmen, that I will continue what I started in the Finance Committee about providing honest, open dialogue with regard to the issues that affect the town. I believe the Selectmen Group, I mean, we're here to set policy, to enforce policy, to do right, to be authentic, to listen to you guys. Town meeting is incredible. I mean, but we all, you know, where you get to hear from, from the folks who go to town meeting. But it only happens two, maybe three times a year. The Board of Selectmen is an opportunity to hear from you guys and to also give to you guys, either through attendance or through watching it on television, knowledge and education about what's going on in town. And as I said before, knowledge is powerful. So again, I see it both as equal parts to represent and to protect the town because that is our job. As, if you will, like the, almost like the Board of Directors in a corporation, you know, we're, the Board of Selectmen would be here to make sure the town manager is doing the day-to-day and, you know, studying policy, like I said, and basically to put our town in a successful position for the future, not just today, not just five years from now, 20 years from now. You want to look back at your, at your time in Abington and be, and be, have pride in your town and know that you spent your dollars and your time wisely, and that hopefully we've made an impact. And that's my goal, being on the, being on the Board of Selectmen. It's not about me, it's about you guys, and I hope to be able to have a positive, successful influence. In closing, again, I'd like to thank everyone. And please, when you go to, when you go to the voting booth on Saturday, April 26th, we're open. I think the election is, the, it's 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night, I believe, at the town, at the Abington High School. Please consider casting one of your votes for Maureen Janson. I'm second on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob, for your question. And thank you to my colleagues, Ms. Janson and Mr. Coyle. And thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I really appreciate the time that you took out of your day to come here and listen to us talk about the issues and what really matters to the folks of Abington. And I just wanna say a quick piece about leadership. Leadership is about listening and learning. I may be new, but I'm learning as much as I can by talking with the different department heads, knocking on doors, making phone calls. And I want the voters to know that I will do the very best, my very best, to go out there, meet with them, learn from them, listen to them. And I think that's essential. I don't think that any prior experience, any particular job makes you qualified to be a public servant. I think it's about listening, and I think it's about learning about what matters to the voters. Being a public servant, being a member of the Board of Selectmen, it's not about you, it's about the voters of Abington. And I really want to emphasize that. And I also want to encourage the voters of Abington to think about the last three years, and if they feel as if they have been represented on the Board of Selectmen. And if they also feel positive about the direction the town is going in. And I want to reiterate something that I stated last Tuesday. This election is about choice. What do the voters of Abington want? Do they want more of the same, or do they want someone new to represent them? And I will make the Board a proactive one. I will listen, I will learn, and I will lead. My name will be last on the ballot. My name is Rebecca Cantor, and I hope you will give me one of your votes on April 26th. Thank you.
I want to thank the audience that's coming, being so polite and listening to the candidates. No matter what, especially people at home that may be watching this or eventually watching. These people take time out of their business lives, their family lives, to volunteer. This is an unpaid position, so they're volunteering their time. And there's a lot of headaches to do, try and improve the quality of life for their families as well as our families. And when people are complaining or criticizing, please make sure that you take the time to at least go out and vote. Many of the people I speak to that complain about public service don't even make the time. Some aren't even registered. So please, before you start complaining about public service, particularly people who are volunteering their time to improve their quality of life, give it a second thought. Contact these folks, ladies and gentlemen, anytime. I'm sure they'll be answering questions. The election day is April 26th, Saturday, at the high school, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Also that day is the Lions Breakfast.
Till 11, 8 to 11.
8 to 11. Rosie Walls is having a book sale at the public library, a dollar, a half and 50 cents for a paperback. That's always a great day for any degrees, and it will most of your average degrees. And also, Little League starts that day, and they have the procession for opening day of Little League. So be careful when you're driving out and around because there're gonna be a lot of people. Hopefully, it'll be another great day. Thank you very much for all you've given the community and all you expect to give in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I really can't thank you enough for taking the time and interest to support us. Remember, they have to full pay. It's always a pleasure trying to give. A lot of people want to do as well as we'd like, and they may know as well as us. So please, instead of donating, whether it's food or paper goods, money's always great because they can get like $7 value to the dollar and the dummy. But keep that in mind. And please, keep our veterans, those who are still within service, the animals who have passed away. Do what's, if you can't help a veteran, you need us. Help your neighbors. A lot of people need help these days. Whether it's taking the barrels in, as some people mentioned, do what you can do. But if we all work together and help each other, the quality of life for the whole town will improve dramatically. That's enough, thank you very much.
Thank you.